Let the call to order the Select Board meeting of November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please rise for the pleasure of the members.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our men and women, past and present, from our veterans. Thanks very much. Please be seated. Okay. We got an SRO meeting tonight, just about. Okay. The warrant has been signed? We will move on to appointments?
Yes.
What's that?
Just kidding.
Okay. We have a new candidate for the Dartmouth Youth Commission. Is anybody here? Wonderful. Please step forward. Love to have you. Please introduce yourself and tell us about yourself, please.
I'm Shauna Matos.
Pull the microphone down.
Hi, I'm Shauna Matos. I've lived in Dartmouth all my life. And my children go to Dartmouth schools. And I worked in the mental health field for eleven years, so I'd love to be a part of the Youth Commission Board.
Anybody have any comments or questions?
Motion to appoint. Second.
Of course, I just will add, I spoke with your chair, and he was wholeheartedly thrilled that you were joining on, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? We will, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, I hear none, unanimous. Thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to hearing from you in the whole committee.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next appointment would be for the Dartmouth Cultural Council. Is Carol here? There she is. Did you please, yeah, I know you did. I remember. Please introduce yourself, Carol.
Certainly. I'm Carol Bliven. I've been a Dartmouth resident for four decades. I've been an art teacher for thirty-two years in Taunton, and also an artist, visual artist. And I'm interested in doing this because art has been my life, and I'd like to share the arts, not just visual arts, but music, theater, dance, with the community. And I think the program's wonderful. I've been both a recipient of it and participated in other ways in the venues that they've had. So I'd like to join the council.
Great. Any comments from anybody or questions?
Motion to appoint. Second.
Second. Okay. No questions or comments still? Are we all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay. Now we go to the Dartmouth Tree Committee Appointments. We're gonna handle that, Mr. McGinnis, sweet.
These, you had made some appointments previously. The committee wasn't here, the draft, the charge. We've received letters of intent. The members listed on the agenda have submitted letters of intent. It's up to the board to decide to appoint them. One thing Ms. Brooks brought up was that they have different terms to start. Two have three-year terms, two have two-year terms, and one has a one-year term. So the board, if they're appointing the five, they would need to decide the terms as well.
Is anybody here tonight from the committee?
Maybe we want to ask these people.
Aye.
And Parson.
Yep. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for having me. So should I go over those terms? We decided that Ruth Furman be one year. And Susan McLaren and Parson, two years. And then we have Daniel Cook and Winslow Dresser are the real professionals, the most professional in the group, and they're three years.
Great.
I'd say this committee's pretty well organized.
Trying. I'm a Virgo. That helps.
Ms. Brooks, you can put your system away.
I can put my system away.
Okay. Do we vote for the, in total?
You can't vote as recommended.
As a group, okay.
Motion to appoint as recommended.
Second.
Any comments or questions for anybody? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I hear none, unanimous.
Thank you so much.
And we're here to support you too. It's a great, great.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay. Next, we have Payden Arum Village Maritime Center Holiday Light Request.
Hello, my name is Molly Armando, and this is Natalie Sein. I am the creator of the Payden Arum Buoy Tree. And last year, it was on the town property, the Maritime Center. So we are seeking approval to have it again this year.
This was not on the agenda. This was just for the lights. So that's, you're a meeting early. That's gonna be, this was not, the request came in, we hadn't put it on this agenda yet. It was proposed to be put on the next agenda.
Is there any way we can get around this?
The board can.
Well, the reason it was brought to our attention is because the lights are going up in the village, I think, this Saturday. And so the frame of the tree is scheduled to be delivered this week. So we wanted to make sure that we could actually go ahead and do it.
Knowing what it means to put a holiday X up early.
I think, I can't speak for the board. Last year, they were supportive of, you know, one thing, it's for charity. So we would need an explanation, a request, saying the tree is for this purpose. We want to do charitable donations. This is the charity. This is who it's serving. And then the board would evaluate that. So that's why we have to put it on the agenda. It has to be formal.
Can we, can we vote to approve pending that document?
Pending approval of.
We want it up. We want it up this week so the elves can put their lights on.
Yeah, and I'm happy to send any documentation for, you know, the information on the charities as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve the request of the Payden Arum Business Association for the holiday lights and to allow the buoy trees, buoy tree or trees up again at the Maritime Center.
And rightly lit.
That includes lighting the Maritime Center, et cetera.
Right.
The whole schmear.
In the million dollar basket.
The whole schmear. You know, there's no need for them to come, there's no need for them to come in two weeks, you know.
Thank you.
Lowe's had Christmas already in July and.
Extremely generous.
All market had their movies in July and June, so why can't we just go a couple extra weeks?
I think Valentine's Day is out already.
That's my motion.
Okay. I'll second it.
Power of the Maritime Center. Okay. Any questions or comments before we continue? I see Mr. Gracie has joined us on Zoom. So Frank is not here, but he's on Zoom voting with us. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. We have no comments or questions. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
None?
I heard Frank say aye as well.
So we're five-zero.
Five-zero.
That was a monumental decision process, so thank you.
So the lights will be put up, and then the buoy tree will be officially lit December second.
December second, yep.
All right.
Six, at six-thirty PM Friday night.
There you go.
Okay. One more time, wait. I didn't quite hear that. What?
Lighting is six-thirty PM on December second, Friday night.
You're gonna have two buoy trees or just one?
Just one.
Same as last year.
Same as last year. So artists and, you know, families, kids, those types of buoys are gonna go on the main tree. And then we have business buoys this year, which will go all along the boardwalk. And they're a larger size.
I owe you mine. I owe you my business.
Everybody, December second, six-thirty, on the dot.
Okay.
Sad day is January thirty-first. No, July thirty, January thirty-first is a sad day when the lights. December second? No, when the lights stop shining and start coming down, because it looks so pretty festive. I know, I know. Focus.
All right. I think it's time for us to move on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next year's budget, hope it gets asked much more time. Okay.
Usually doesn't.
Thank you for your stepping forward, Mr. McDonald. Okay, next, we have the Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee Update.
Hi, everybody. You all know me, but perhaps the public does not. I'm Patty Sweraduk. I'm the Chair of the Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee. And I am here to provide an update. So I thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide this update on the progress of the Harbor Management Plan Implementation Committee. Along with our implementation partners, we have made a lot of progress over the last seven months since our last report. So, and also for the public that may be watching, our committee was appointed by the Select Board in February of two thousand and twenty-one to facilitate the implementation of the Payden Arum Harbor Management Plan, which was adopted by the town in two thousand and nineteen. Our role is to engage, discuss, and understand from all the stakeholders in town any impediments or issues in implementing this detailed, multifaceted document. While we are tasked with addressing the goals and objectives set forth in this plan, we do not set policy for others. Instead, we hope to engage others to work together as a team to identify issues and strategies. We're very encouraged by and grateful for the support from various town boards and department staff. Their expertise and willingness to work together with us has been a key factor in getting things done. I want to thank Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Hadad, in particular, for their continued support and guidance. Our harbor master, Steve Mello, has taken the lead in working with the town on several projects that I will mention in this report as well. Mark Garrett from Conservation, Christine O'Grady, DPW, and so many others of your very talented experts that you have on your staff have been so giving with their time. And it's really made it work. It's making it work. It's what's important in a team. Our committee members are town residents, Roger Race, who is sitting right over here, Andrea Langhauser, who is seated next to him, Brian O'Hare, which, who is not able to be here this evening. He had a previous engagement, Citizen Dave Tattlebaum, and myself. They have devoted a great deal of time and effort to this committee and to this important work on behalf of the town. Our first public Zoom meetings began in October of two thousand and twenty-one, and we've continued to hold a public Zoom meeting every month. We have an updated webpage on the Town of Dartmouth website where we post meetings, minutes, and other information relating to our work and our role as a committee. Let me update you now on some of the specific projects and initiatives that we continue to work on and follow. And you can see this. It's long. I'm really sorry. I tried to pare this down. I can't even begin to tell you how many times I took the pen and slashed and cut things out. And so my sincerest apologies in advance, and I will try and make this as short and concise as I can. The Buttonwood first, this is the first update, Buttonwood to Bay Water Quality Project. The Town of Dartmouth has partnered with the Buzzards Bay Coalition and the City of New Bedford in a five-year Buttonwood to Bay Restoration Project, which is funded by a grant awarded from, by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency's Southeastern New England Program. The project began in March two thousand and twenty-two to tackle the water quality issues in Payden Arum Harbor by first identifying and then reducing sources of pollution. This summer was a busy water sampling season. In Buttonwood Brook, the major tributary to the harbor, there were ten rounds of water samples taken at fourteen stations, including continuous data taken to see how the brook responded to a rainstorm event. In Payden Arum Harbor north of the causeway, three water quality sensors were deployed and two sediment studies were conducted. The water sensors will be redeployed next May. The Buzzards Bay Coalition would like to attend a future Select Board meeting to present their findings. I don't know at this time when that might be, but they will be in touch. The Dartmouth DPW, in partnership with the BBC and New Bedford, was recently awarded another federal grant to map the drainage areas of individual stormwater outfalls. This mapping will be overlaid by a land use analysis being conducted by the Buzzards Bay National Estuary Program to model stormwater runoff volumes and its subsequent pollutant loading into the brook. The BBC has commented that this project is likely to have the most scientific data of any study they have done to date. Next, the Dartmouth Cultural Series. In an effort to educate the public on the local effects of climate change, the Dartmouth Cultural Center hosted a four-speaker series over the summer. A member of our committee, Andrea Langhauser, she's, again, humble, too humble, and Mark Garrett from our own Conservation Office were featured speakers. Dartmouth Community TV has posted two of these presentations. The Buzzards Bay Coalition spoke on the impact of climate change on salt marshes and the NOAA presentation on hurricane preparedness. The Dartmouth Cultural Center intends to host this free speaker series again next summer. Next, the Harbor Economic Analysis. The town has had a longstanding connection to the maritime economy, but lacks a comprehensive economic development strategy that builds on its strengths. A completed economic analysis will position the town to capitalize on new and emerging opportunities. The Harbor Plan recommended that the town conduct an economic analysis to understand revenues and costs associated with the harbor, because it can inform, help to inform policy decisions, focus investments, set costs for services, and estimate capital and operating expenses. And it sure does help with grant applications. So, having said that, last April, I reported to you that our committee has been working closely with NOAA economists to develop this economic analysis for the harbor. And while NOAA was able to complete eighty percent of this analysis at no cost to the town, we still need to hire a consultant to complete the study. So we've got a little ways to go. And this should cost about thirty-five thousand dollars. That is what it's gonna take to complete. That's this last little bit that we need to complete. And this would come from a consultant. This study would provide a concise technical memorandum, including narrative text, tables, and graphs which would summarize the work completed. It's expected that the work would take about eight to twelve weeks to complete. The town has just recently applied for an SEC grant to cover eighty percent of this thirty-five thousand dollars. Should the SEC grant application be successful, a valuable economic analysis would be completed at a total cost to the town of somewhere around seven thousand dollars. We should know by the end of the year if this application is successful. As a result of our work with the NOAA economists, our town was one of three communities in the country invited to attend and give a report on our harbor and its work with NOAA, our harbor team, and its work with NOAA at the National Network of Working Waterfronts Conference. It was quite an honor, and I think I reported to you something about this last time. Mr. Hadad and I traveled to Boston at the end of July on an exceedingly hot day. It must have been about a hundred degrees in Boston. We had the opportunity to listen to what other waterfront communities across the country are experiencing, from Maine to Louisiana to Portland, Oregon. We listened to the unique challenges and successes that they have had with sea level rise, coastal resiliency planning efforts, maritime job hiring, and how the coastal real estate changes have affected maritime economy and public access. In our presentation, Mr. Hadad clarified the importance of a harbor economic analysis in Dartmouth for the purpose of future planning. He explained that understanding the revenues and costs associated with a harbor can help to inform policy and planning decisions. I spoke next, explaining the unique role our Harbor Plan Implementation Committee has in addressing the plan recommendations. It was well-received. Cody did a great job. I got some really great slides from the museum that they donated to show how the harbors changed over the last forty years. Was really, actually, no, eighty years. These were some really old photographs, which we were able to incorporate in a slideshow that Cody created. So it was great. It was terrific, and it was exciting. Next, the Need for Dredging in the Harbor. The need for dredging is well documented in the Harbor Plan. The main Poniganset Bay Channel has developed shallow areas due to sand accretion, which will soon result in vessels waiting on high tides to navigate certain areas. This will negatively impact safe navigation, reduce commercial and recreational use eventually, boat storage, and importantly, public access. The northern portion of the harbor already has restricted navigation as a result of significant silt buildup. The public ramp at the Arthur Dias Landing in the harbor has significant sand accretion. Without intervention, an economic loss will occur to both the town and maritime businesses from the inability to access the only fuel dispensary in the water and from the inability of deeper draft boats to reach commercial accommodation at any of the three facilities in the north end of the Outer Harbor. Continued accretion of sand will limit the ability to launch boats at public launch ramps. The town, in collaboration with the Harbor Master's Office, has just recently submitted an SEC grant application to pay for a feasibility study to explore dredging certain areas of the harbor. We should know by the end of the year if it's successful. The cost of the study is forty-two thousand dollars. Eighty percent of that cost would be paid for by the grant, and Waterways, Waterways will be paying for the remaining twenty percent. Next, Municipal Vulnerability Plan and the Harbor Plan. In my last report, I let you know that the town was submitting an application for a municipal vulnerability preparedness grant in late spring of this year. I actually didn't trip over my own words this time. I quite often do. So I should just call it MVP. As you may remember, this concept was developed by looking at the intersection of the town's MV plan and the harbor plan. Part one of the application was to develop a town infrastructure plan to mitigate the effects of eventual sea level rise. Part two involved the creation of an educational program for town residents to learn about the costs and effects of sea level rise and global warming. We were notified by the granting authority that while the project was both viable and appropriate, we needed to include more technical and definitive data. Mr. Hadad, Ms. Langhauser, and I met recently with our area rep to review where changes could be made in the application in order to be successful in a future submittal. So we're not discouraged, at least I'm not. And, you know, you learn by these things and you move forward. Next, Residential Docks and Piers Permitting. The Harbor Plan prioritized the need for the town to articulate a collective vision for our harbor and identified the need for an improved and streamlined process in permitting residential docks and piers. A collective vision for the future of the harbor will avoid potential conflict between and allow room for a variety of different public access uses. Second, streamlining the permitting process will benefit applicants, their engineers, and our own town staff who review these applications. To address these planned recommendations, our focus group, small focus group, has met regularly since May. There are representatives from town departments, Planning Conservation and the Harbor Master's Office, and as well as members of our own committee. We recognize that coastal communities in Massachusetts vary greatly in density, geographical attributes, and needs. And there's no one-size-fits-all solution. We are mindful of the uniqueness of our own harbor, given. We are mindful of the uniqueness of our own harbor, given its quintessential New England charm, productive shellfish areas for recreational and commercial use, public beaches, opportunities to launch and rent watercraft, and the ability to provide safe harbor for visiting boats. Our vibrant village draws residents from across town and across the region. Throughout our discussions, an important Harbor Plan theme surfaced, the right of public access as protected by Chapter 91. Continuing to ensure public access for the many different types of activities for all of our town residents is also a Harbor Plan priority. To address this Harbor Plan recommendation, we've been exploring solutions that will balance the rights of the public to access our waters and private use. We have collectively agreed to focus on a Chapter 91 local permitting program for residential docks and piers. This would utilize already existing state regulations for permitting and could allow for a more streamlined and simple process for applicants and their engineers. In addition, we collectively agreed that identifying public access use areas within the harbor could ensure that the varied ways our residents utilize our harbor can be considered and protected. We have a lot more work ahead of us. But I wanted to provide you with an update on some of the work that we've been doing and some of the thoughts. We've been working very hard on this and some of the things that we've agreed on, at least initially. So our plan is to continue with your guidance, of course, and with your expert staff to continue to explore this. And we will continue our focus group meetings, and we will report back to you when we have more information. Dias Landing Marina Update. So next. Are y'all still awake?
Oh, yeah.
Yes? Okay, good.
You're doing great.
I'm almost done. Don't worry, I'm almost done.
Take your time.
Okay.
Seriously, take your time.
Okay. I just, I'm a math teacher by trade, and I can talk forever.
I wasn't too good at math in high school, so, but you got my attention, so go with it.
I can go on forever, so.
It's not algebra, so.
I just, I want to be cognizant and not drive you crazy. Anyway, Dias Landing Marina Update. Constructing a small boat and dinghy municipal marina is a Harbor Plan priority. It will improve public access to the waterfront, as private marinas are unable to satisfy the high demand for dinghy and small boat storage. An extended pier and float system will also allow for non-boating residents to have increased public access to view the calm and pristine waters of the northern harbor. And if you've ever been up that way on a kayak or a paddleboard or small boat, you'll know what I mean. It is extraordinarily beautiful. The town, in collaboration with the Harbor Master's Office, applied for and won an SEC grant for all of the preliminary work of detailed state applications prior to the actual build of the dock expansion. FOTH Engineering, which is a world-class engineering firm, has been hired, and they're on track with everything. Importantly, a memorandum of understanding between parks and rec and waterways, a draft memorandum describing respective uses of the entire peninsula has been drafted. This is tremendous progress, and we're very encouraged by it and appreciate everything that the town does to apply for these grants and to further everything along. So we're extremely encouraged and grateful. And we're also encouraged by working with other departments, other teams in this process. It's good stuff. Next, Parking. As I did in April when I reported to you last, I want to mention the issue of parking in the village and at Dias Landing. Sorry, I'm going to do it. This is an important and ongoing problem that needs solutions. Next. Notice I don't have any answers.
No one does right now.
Next, New Bedford Water Quality and Sewer Overflow. As we're all aware, the sewer overflow from New Bedford impacts the water quality in Clark's Cove and in the harbor. We support the efforts of the town and New Bedford to provide timely reports to our residents when these overflows occur. And in conclusion, and I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, we are very grateful to have this opportunity to work with the implementation partners in town. They're experts, and so much is already in process. There's so much progress that's already happened due to all the efforts of town staff and yourselves and Mr. McGinnis and Cody and all of us together, working together. It takes a team of experts, and I'm not one. Math is good, but nothing else. It takes a team of experts, and you've got them here, working collectively as a team to get good results, and that's what's happening. So we're very appreciative, and we thank you for this opportunity to work with you and work with your talented staff as a team to accomplish this important work for the benefit of all of the residents in the town of Dartmouth. And that's it. So thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Very thorough. Thank you very much, Patty. I'm wondering, when, you have a number of grants in process.
Yes.
When will they be announcing the awarding of those grants?
You know, Sean and Cody may know, you guys may know, but I'm assuming, my understanding is at the end of December, the end of the year, the SEC grants, we should know about the two SEC grants.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And do they have two series each year, two rounds?
Yeah.
Application process in spring.
Yes. That's Seaport Economic Council, by the way. I just, now I just say SEC, but for everybody in the audience, it's the Seaport Economic Council. And they focus on helping harbors with respect to the economics of the harbor. So that's their focus. Every granting authority seems to have a particular focus.
Anybody else? Ms. McDonald?
You make light of the fact that you had so much to say, but to be honest with you, there aren't that many committees in a short period of time that have accomplished so much and gotten further. I'd like to throw something else at you.
Go ahead. Send it this way.
Several years.
The shopping shops up in the north.
Several years ago, Alan Haru had approached this committee regarding pedestrian access to the waterfront. One of the things that he suggested was continuing the sidewalk on Smithneck Road along the waterfront.
Yes, I'm aware. The Pathways Committee, I believe it was called.
Right. I'd like to see the Harbor Committee take that on. I'd like to see that, because I don't want the general thought that this is just for boaters. I want to include everyone into this. I want everyone to enjoy the harbor.
Yes.
I enjoy, I don't, I don't go on a boat, mostly because my wife is just dead set against it. I can get her in a swimming pool, but I can't get her on a boat. So my cruising, any cruise that I want to take is completely off the charts.
You can come with one of us.
I know, I really want to try. But I want somebody who has no boating experience, who enjoys the water, who wants to see the sunset, who wants to, you know, take a walk around the harbor, that can go from one area to the harbor to, you know, to another area, to walk through the village and to continue that walk, and just to kind of make it, you know, we all, we all grew up with this misconception of the village as not able for some of the town to enjoy, and that's not necessarily true. And I want, I want the whole town to enjoy it, because it is the town. It is part of this town. And I want people to go down there, to enjoy the shops, to take the walk, to, you know, to have this, to see the sunrise, to see the sunset, to see what goes on down there. And I think that's, that's important, that this harbor, the Harbor Plan encompasses the whole and not have it perceived as a segment. And I think that's part of it, and I really would like to see that portion of it become a reality. I know there was initial pushback from people on the, living on Smithneck, but somebody walking across the street in front of your house isn't going to bother you. And you're going to let these people enjoy the harbor, the walk, and I think that's, that's something we owe to everybody in this town.
I think public access, public access to our waters in the harbor are, that's an important.
Well, that's a by right anyway, the public access.
Public access, yes. And I think it's an important issue, and I think we are continually looking for ways to improve public access. You know, the marina, you know, the plans in the marina have in them, and I think Steve Mello could probably, or any one of these guys could speak to that, but the plans, you know, are for people to be able, who are non-boaters, to be able to walk down there and access and look at the water and, and just see how beautiful it is. And as we move along, we'll be, I will bring that up at the next meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you for, thank you for saying what you're saying. I appreciate it.
Patty, for someone that proclaims not to be very professional, I must say, your presentation was over-the-top professional.
Well, thank you. You're most kind.
So much.
You're very kind.
You always show up well-versed with all the information we need. But speaking of Alan Haru, so Mr. Haru drew up a parking, excuse me, I'll preface this all, I think everybody knows that I'm, that I have fought for parking in the village since the day I was elected a Select Board Member. And every day, I look for ways to do that. But Alan had a great idea, I still have it at home. He has a parking plan that would utilize the old fire station on.
Bridge.
On Bridge Street, yeah.
Yep. And, and it's wonderfully designed with the correct type of parking, not to offend neighbors. It's a wonderful opportunity that the town should take advantage, one way or the other. If you want to have off-street parking, that's the place. It's already designed by an engineer.
Yeah.
Very easy to do. DPW could do most of the work.
Yep.
We could, during summertime, we could put meters there and get a little revenue for the town, but we keep knocking the can down the road. We need to address the seriousness of off-street parking in that village. It is, it's, look, we all know what the village looked like 10 years ago, and we know what it looks like right now and how busy the property, the shop owners are. And it's just going to get to a point where if we don't offer this off-street parking, we're not going to get people to come back, especially families with children.
Yes.
They're not going to park half a mile away, put their children in a stroller and walk down a road that probably doesn't have a sidewalk to the village. That's not safe, and that's not what I, that's not what I want for the village. So I'm coming back with it again, and I will not stop until.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
Until we get a bona fide plan of off-street parking.
I would, I would suggest, I made the suggestion once before, that this board has to meet with the Fire District One and have a conversation directly. And I think we should do that as soon as we can, because it's not going to happen with the management plan, it's not going to happen with the Harbor Master, and it's not going to happen with the town administrator. It's going to be between this board and the Fire District One, so I think.
I mean, there are ways to take that property.
Well, I don't think.
Well, I don't think we need to do it.
I don't think it's a good idea to get in it, but I think we need to sit with them. There's a lot of choice we can have.
We also need to sit with the Historical Commission on that, too.
Yes, okay.
I'm glad to, I mean, I'm glad that everybody's still talking about it. It's wonderful, and it's wonderful to have everybody so involved.
I would.
I know you'll come up with something great.
I'd just like to add a comment regarding Mr. McDonald's commentary on the sidewalk. We, as a group, and it is a privilege to serve in this committee, and Patty's very humble about how she directs traffic in our, in our committee, but we try to pick the most important issues first, water quality, the harbor use and things, and the sidewalk and the whole public access is absolutely on the drill down and very soon, but we've got a lot of things going already. But I, I think I can safely say for our group that public access and whatever we do on Smithneck Road and parking are absolutely on that list of things to try to accomplish.
For me, it sounds like the committee has a bunch of people who like to multitask, so.
Oh, is it?
Throw another one right at you.
Absolutely. And, and our town staff, you know, Steve Mello and everybody are, they're experts in multitasking. So.
I just wanted to ask, and I totally agree that you need, you have a very comprehensive plan with lots of recommendations, so certainly it makes sense to prioritize those, and most of what you've talked about tonight to do the job needs grant funding, so that has to pace itself as well.
Yes.
But one of the recommendations, when we talk about the right of public access, I don't want us to forget, is looking at the development of a fishing pier. We had many conversations early in my tenure on this board about fishing on the bridge, and so much of that would be taken care of if we had a dedicated fishing pier. So I'm hoping it's already in here, not to be added like the sidewalks on Smithneck Road, but I'm hoping that that can come up to alleviate some of the concerns of both the citizens and the fishermen or fisher persons.
Understood. I will, I will be sure to bring it up at the next meeting and get back to you.
Your report, again, was very comprehensive, and I applaud all of you for looking towards finding grants.
These are the smart guys over here, by the way. I just want you to know.
Well, thank you for that, because, you know, when I hear a $42,000 price tag or a $35,000 price tag, I'm, but knowing that.
Consultants are expensive. Good consultants are very expensive to give you what you want.
Knowing we can get 80% of it covered under a grant, should we file everything appropriately as we should.
Yeah.
But we have a harbor that is in need, as beautiful as it is, and so I would believe that our group should support, you know, filing at every.
Moment.
Opportunity.
I think we, I think that has always been a focus of ours, has been, you know, we look at, we look at something that needs a solution, but it always costs money.
Gentle.
And sometimes it costs a lot of money, and, but, you know, so we have made a very sincere attempt, and the town is very good at this, Cody as well, to look for grants to help, to help us pay for these things, and I think it's a very important part of this process in addressing the plan recommendations. You have to, you have to get grants.
Mr. Gracie, any comment?
Do I have to turn around?
No.
Hi, Frank.
Howdy.
I'd like to just say one thing. The work of this committee has to do with getting away from all the everyday tasks that we do as a town, especially staff, and Lord knows, there's plenty to do. And what we're doing is asking staff, volunteers, committees, and boards to go over and above and do something that's much different, and all that does is add more work for everybody. And I think the reception we've gotten in total from staff down to all the volunteers that we have in town has been exceptional. But the only way to get these things done is you have to step away from the everyday and try to look at it. And I, for one, look forward to this group, extraordinary group, and the group that this does as a model, as you go forward, especially for the upcoming master plan, which has even more, a wider scope of things to do. It's going to require the same kind of stepping away from the everyday and looking at it from a bird's eye view to try to get things done that haven't been addressed.
Yes.
And I think that, frankly, I think your work and direction of this committee will be a model, try to get that done, because that's the only way we're going to do it. And there's going to be some extraordinary things come along, and that master plan needs going to the same kind of attention, so, thank you.
Yeah, and I think you're right, and I, but I want to applaud. Yeah, and I think you're right, but I want to applaud all the efforts of the town staff, Mr. McGinnis and Cody, and everybody who's.
Any else have any questions or comments?
Who's working.
No, I just want to remind Sean to put on the agenda that we do want to make sure we schedule the Buzzards Bay Coalition to attend a meeting.
Well, they're gonna come back to us when they're ready to do it, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I think it probably won't be till early next year.
January.
January, February, something like that.
All right.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
But we'll be in touch on that, or they will.
Anybody else?
Yep. Anybody else?
Just to speak real quickly, my name's Sam Haines.
Stand over there, Sam, right at the microphone.
My name's Sam Haines, I'm the South Coast Regional Coordinator for CZM Coastal Zone Management. And I'm here for another project, actually. But I did want to know that, you know, for state regulations and things like that, you can always reach out to us as well, you know, in terms of Chapter 91, what can be done and can't be done under those regulations and how they fit into your harbor management plan. You know, that's one of the things that we do, so don't hesitate to reach out to us as.
Fantastic. Excellent. Okay, we time to move on? All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Next will be the Coastal Zone Management Seawall Design Public Meeting.
It's just a presentation. Who do we? Make a decision on the direction that you want.
No, it isn't a public area. No.
Public meeting. Okay. Kindly introduce yourself and we get things going?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Trey Ruthven, I'm from Sustainable Coastal Solutions. Oh.
Get moving around a little, there you go.
Good evening, my name is Trey Ruthven, I'm from Sustainable Coastal Solutions.
This is Jeremy Packer with Full Infrastructure and Environment.
And Gray, who you just met, is Sam Haines, he's with Coastal Zone Management. We're here to talk about a project that the town has undertaken through the Coastal Zone Management Coastal Resiliency Program to look at a pond against the park in Diaz Landing.
It was working earlier, he had it up.
Brief technical.
This is when we need that music.
Talk amongst yourselves.
Go ahead.
It just worked actually last time, or something.
It worked earlier. We can see it on the TV.
Drop it, maybe.
Frank. Frank's got it. It's over Frank, isn't it? Oh, no.
He's there.
There it goes.
We're right with you out there.
No problem, sorry about that.
Oh.
We can wait.
Here it comes.
Free appetizer.
You just watch it on TV?
Yeah. What is this, Best Buy appetizer?
There you go.
Technology's never fast.
It's going, that's okay.
You'll watch it on TV.
All right, so I just wanted to cover where we've gotten to at this stage. We've been working on this grant for a little over a year now, with some starts and stops, but moving along very well. So part of what I wanted to do is define resiliency, so everyone understands what that means and how we're taking that into account when we're looking at how to adjust the issues with the Pond Against the Park. Also discuss CZM resiliency grant goals, coastal hazards that the park is facing, our conceptual designs, and our next steps forward. So what is resiliency? NOAA has a very good way of defining it in a very short amount of, short number of words. So coastal resiliency means the building, the ability of a community to bounce back after hazardous events such as hurricanes, coastal storms and flooding, rather than simply reacting after the fact. And how does that tie into this grant that the town has gotten through MCZM? So these MCZM grants are generally the order of a one or two-year period. And they help communities and nonprofits throughout the state with financing. And really, technical support is really where these grants come in handy to support awareness in the community, but also understanding climate change, identify vulnerabilities, and how to kind of adapt for this going forward. They're also very useful when it comes to the regulatory part of implementing these projects. So what coastal hazards does Dartmouth face? There's four mainly. You can see in the bottom gray part of the photograph, you can see that, you know, obviously, as we all know, Dartmouth's protected from, you know, northeast events. But we do, will experience tropical events, so hurricanes pushing storm surge up. Most of our storm fetches, you know, storm fetches, the distance wind blows over when it's generating waves are fairly short. That means less wave energy coming in. But as we look at storm surge, sea level rise, waves, and then erosion that occurs from all of those, we can anticipate what's going to happen. If anybody's been out to Pond Against the Park lately, these photographs will not be surprising. The top photos, the parking lot at Diaz Landing. The bottom photo, right on the left, is going out towards the point where you can see the seawall's been eroding behind, saltwater's actually intruding the park, taking away turf, which is also similar to the photo on the right. Here's another one, this is looking from west to east, towards Diaz Landing. And you can see wave overtopping, wave run up, slowly eroding the park surface, pulling it out into the harbor, but also jeopardizing the infrastructure that is in place. It's closer to Diaz Landing, where parking lots being impacted. So the question is, you know, why is this happening? So if we look at the elevation of the park, it's color-coded, so obviously the blues and greens are lower in elevation, when we get to the reds, they're higher in elevation. But the one thing that's important is, you know, that orange range in the middle is generally two to four feet in elevation. So when we start talking about, you know, is that high or is that low? That's actually very low, high tide is roughly on the order of two feet. So when we're at elevation two, it's getting wet a lot. Annual high tides. Annual high tides cause more flooding, especially when we add storm surge in. We looked at Newport's tide gauge from 1930 to spring of 2022 to figure out, you know, how often do we face these events? So we looked at storm records where we had a storm surge two feet above high water. That happened 41 times over that period. So these don't happen every year, but they're very frequent. And when we start looking at sea level rise, it actually shows how much more frequent that's gonna be. And these are all small storms, again, we're talking two feet of surge, that's not very high. When we try to relate these to FEMA and storm surge mapping, you can see what that effects have here. So the top photo on the right-hand side, that's the 10-year storm, as defined by FEMA. And you can see a majority of the park is underwater. The bottom photo is a 100-year event. You can see the park has six to seven feet of water on top of it. And these are still water elevations, so these don't have effective waves on top of them. You can see the values in NAVD, so when we're talking in elevations later on, two, four, six, you can see that elevation six is about the 10-year event. 50-year event is just under 10 at 9.6, 100-years 11.7. So when we're talking about minor coastal storms and big coastal storms, let's talk about sea level rise and how that's going to affect us going forward. So what you can see here is Newport's tide gauge plotted out from 1930 to 2022. The one thing that's been interesting is you have yearly fluctuations, but it's generally progressing on a linear trend. So what we're seeing is about 0.11 inches per year, or about every century, about 0.9 feet, so just under a foot. So that means, you know, coastal storms that we had, you know, 100 years ago, so 1920, they're about one foot higher now, same exact storm. So that's also why, when we talk about resiliency, we have to take that into account and build that into, especially infrastructure that was designed or implemented historically, because they were never designed to actually handle these new water levels that we're facing. So this is the linear trend that we've been saving now. When we start looking at projections, the projections look a little more dire. So the green line you can see in the figure, that's the linear trend that we've seen. The projections on the right-hand side of that figure are the various sea level rise projections, varying from intermediate to extreme. Generally, when we're looking at CZM projects, we're using the intermediate high, so the second one down. So that says by 2030, we're 0.9 feet higher. By 2050, we're 1.8. So this is all on top of that foot we've already gathered from the 20s. The one thing that I will say, looking at these projections, NOAA's just come out with some new projections based on some IPCC data. And they're a little bit lower than CZM has been projecting in the state. So they would kind of fall between the white bars and the green bars. So not quite as extreme as the dark blue bars on top, which is good, because that actually makes adapting infrastructure much easier to deal with. And obviously, these projections are projections, they're not, you know, data. So when we're talking about sea level rise, and, you know, this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier, and what effects it has. You can see on the left-hand side, sea level rise in 1950, with storm surge on top, just barely getting the base of the buildings. But we go to 2010, we see the sea level rise higher, that pushes storm surge higher, and all of a sudden now we have flooding. So we're going to see this all through, you know, southeast Massachusetts, and actually all through the United States and the east coast, as this keeps going on. But that kind of gives you an idea of where we start talking about nuisance flooding. And so we have infrastructure that's been built, our tides keep going up. And that means on a, you know, not necessarily daily basis, but a multiple times a month or even on a weekly basis, we have flooding, and that becomes nuisance flooding. It doesn't cause significant damage, but it does make moving around the community more difficult. It does cause some infrastructure damage. And those are becoming more pronounced and getting harder and harder to ignore. The next part we looked at, trying to figure out what impacts are facing the park. We took a look at the wind data. So on the top right, you'll see a rose graph. So the rose graph represents the compass points if you go around. You'll see there's each segment of the pie there has color coding. Lighter means lower, and as it comes out, probability increases. So you can obviously see from the southwest is a predominant wind direction, which we all know. And also, we look to the, directly to the east, it's lower occurrence, but those obviously are longer-lasting storms and happen impact. We took this wind data and built a numerical model. You can see the bisimetry on the left, and just a simple case of what waves were generated on the right-hand side. And looking at a variety of conditions, you know, we're generally seeing, you know, one to two feet under extreme conditions in the harbor, which is not very big. But when we start looking at the elevations, the sea walls we have, the overtopping that occurs, when we go back to the photographs we saw earlier, it all kind of comes together and goes, ah, you know, these facts are all agreeing, and this is why we have issues. So how can the town of Dartmouth make Pond Against the Park more resilient? So leading into that discussion, this is what came from Cody, but came also from a bunch of the other departments as we started this project. And they were kind of design goals, and they wanted a pragmatic solution and practical solutions to mitigate the hazards. Realizing the constraints the town were under, they were looking for affordable solutions. They definitely wanted to preserve public usage of the park, which will obviously come into discussion later as we present alternatives. If we could integrate whatever our solutions into the existing infrastructure, that would be good. Minimize footprint, and that comes from two different avenues. Obviously, we want to preserve the infrastructure in the park, take up as that. But we also have natural resources immediately offshore, we have oyster beds, we have salt marsh. And if we start pushing our structures seaward, we start impacting those areas, and that also makes regulatory permitting very difficult. And if possible, any of our solutions, could they be multipurpose? So we've talked about big storms, we've talked about little storms, we've talked about how do we increase resiliency? And so here's what I wanted to kind of show. So the top photo shows water elevation of three feet. So at three feet, we're keeping the water on the outside of the park, basically. As we progress down to four feet, it starts migrating inward. And at five feet, over half the park is now wet. So when we talk about resiliency, can we start keeping water levels for lower elevation coastal storms or lower, higher frequency, lower impact coastal storms on the outside of the park? When we look at the 100-year storm, Pond Against the Park is not critical infrastructure. If we have a big hurricane and it floods, the town has lots of other issues besides this park. But this park flooding multiple times a year does put a drain on DPW, because they have to go out and clean it up. It does put a, you know, impact on the harbor, because they have to go out and clean up the boat ramp, clean up the parking lot. And so if we can start addressing those issues and allow those departments to focus on other things, that makes this park, you know, more resilient, but also more usable for the public in town. So what are alternatives for increasing resiliency? So there's three main areas we're gonna talk about. You can see them color-coded. The first is the beach on the western side. The second is the seawall running along the northern side. And the third is also a seawall, but they're the pocket beaches where you have lots of dinghy storage, and you actually have sandy beaches in there where the dinghy storage currently goes. The other piece that runs both in between the first and the second is the head, a rubble head, kind of at the northwest corner of the park, which we'll talk about in a second. So when we look at the western beach, one of the things that's very interesting is it's all about elevation four. So as we talked about storm surge levels, it's very low. And at elevation four, it doesn't overtop on a tidal basis yet, but annual high tide is not getting very far from that. And so the one thing that's very apparent when we look at that beach is that there is no coastal dune behind it. So one of the easy aspects of increasing elevation, keeping the function of the beach, would be to place a small, low coastal dune. So you can see there in yellow, it's a coastal dune. Its berm crest across the top is about 10 feet. It actually raises a height of, it's about two and a half feet in height, so not very high, you know, lower than my waist. So a small feature, one on three slopes on the front side and backside. That would actually start stopping the water from cresting in through that western side. It would also be beneficial to the beach, because as this coastal dune, as it erodes over time, which it will, it'll be something that has to be maintained, not on a yearly cycle, but on a long-term cycle. That sand will actually go down and keep nourishing the beach, so that will actually keep that function going. Building a coastal dune like this will require some modifications to the park. The backside of the beach right now has a row of trees that are in it. Those would likely have to be moved landward to, if they were to be kept. There's also a playground area that would have to be moved landward again. There's also two areas of picnic benches, too, and those could be pulled also landward into the park. So there'd still be a lot of access, but we could also cut off water, preserve the beach going forward. When we go to the northern side, we have the seawalls, which are stacked stone. They've obviously been crumbling for years and are in disrepair. So our suggestion is to kind of hold the line there. And within that footprint, because these are permitted structures by the state, Chapter 91 licenses, we could rebuild those structures in place, using a concrete seawall coming up higher. For aesthetics, we could add a stone fascia and modify it. But that, again, we're taking up to elevation 6.5, so we're cutting off that water access to the park. The one thing that's interesting on the front of the seawall is we have this really nice cobble habitat. And when we talk about cobble beaches, we're generally talking about energetic beaches, so like south coast beaches or beaches on the, you know, east-facing along the state. These cobble beaches are fairly amazing in that it's a mix from sand all the way to cobble. And the one thing that's really nice about them is they adjust to wave energy coming in. And you'll see berms being formed, it dissipates wave energy. And so one of our suggestions, in the areas we can, when we get to the far western side, there's salt marsh, so this wouldn't be, we would tailor it back. But along the most of that section, is we can put a cobble nourishment in front of the seawall. That cobble nourishment will enhance the rocky intertidal habitat. It'll be compatible with the material that's out there, it'll be rounded stone. We've already had the discussion where, you know, is it angu, like we're seeing in walls? And no, it's natural glacial run that we get, and we'll put it in. So that would also enhance that offshore habitat. At the same time, by building that beach in front of that seawall, we're dissipating wave energy before it comes in. wave energy before it comes in. So right now, we have waves come in, hit the wall, and the wave over top, and you can see the splashdown on the backside of the park, where it's pulling sediment straight out through the wall, and also killing the grass, because we have the saltwater intrusion. The one thing we can talk about on the backside, and this has been a discussion between the parks department, our master, and also with Cody, is what do we do on the backside? Because we have about a two-and-a-half-foot elevation gain. So there's a couple of options. A, we can have a seawall that just kind of sticks up, and people can walk up against it, and, you know, sit on it, be a feature that, you know, on a sunny day, could be very used. Other options, we could build a small, kind of dune area at the back, but tailored down to existing elevation of the park. The nice thing about that feature is we could put native vegetation in there that is actually saltwater tolerant, and so you'd have this nice natural zone right along the seawall that would be, yeah, environmentally sensitive, bring back native plant species to the park, but also have that smooth transition going through. And you can see that there, it doesn't show very up from, very well from this far, but it's there in yellow. Other options are, if you didn't want to do a nourishment, you could just actually increase the grade of the park and tailor it in, so you'd be more soils that you're used to with grass on top. You know, one issue I have with putting grass on top is you're going to see the same issues that you have now. Grass is pulling back or eroding that sediment, it's really not designed to be getting inundated on a regular basis. The nice thing about this northern section is the infrastructure within the park is landward enough that we can build these features without actually impacting any of that. One thing we can consider with all of these infrastructure parts, as we redevelop and increase resiliency, we can talk about how the usage of the park gets, how it gets used throughout the year, and if there's any modifications that actually might improve the park overall while we're increasing resiliency. But our goal currently is to minimize impacts to that, to keep our budget low and to make this practical. So now we're over the third section. So we have these pocket beaches, they're over by the Diaz Landing. The one thing we've heard is that, you know, dinghy storage is really tight in town. And was there a way to stop water from inflowing into that parking area, but also not jeopardize those features that a lot of people in the town use? And so, again, we were talking, looking at going from a cobble, so a mixed sediment nourishment, to a sand nourishment, because those are sandy beaches. So we could increase the beach footprints in those areas, increase dinghy storage, also dissipate wave energy further offshore before it hits the seawalls, which would all be fantastic. The one thing that we need to keep in mind when we have the seawall in this area is people are accessing the beach in front of the seawall as a regular transit, because they're going, their dinghies are going off to their boats. With the sea level or a seawall increase of two and a half feet, we're going to have to put stairs in. So there will be, whether it's wooden stairs, it could be stone stairs, that's adaptable of what that looks like. But there is going to be that transit over the wall, which we can't avoid if we're going to actually stop water from intruding into the park. So again, yeah, this is, yeah, same thing. And you can see where the boat parking is in the backside. This is kind of an overview, again, similar to the last photo. You can see over in pink on the left-hand side is the dune enhancement, and blue is the cobble nourishment with the pink bar in between, which is the seawall, where it's increasing. The one point I was talking about earlier was the cobble headland kind of the northwest. That area is fairly low. That structure has not been licensed. To license that structure would be difficult. Our suggestion is to leave it in place, but we can enhance the elevation through building dunes on the backside of it. We can vegetate that area and make it more natural, instead of just being, you know, currently it's concrete, granite, it's a mix of stones from different sources. But we could restore that, in a sense that we're bringing the natural environment back into there. But that would also close that gap, and also let it tie directly into our seawall, which you can see running down the other side of the park. So the next steps for this project, we've been having meetings with, you know, town departments, but this is our first kind of stepping out in public. So we'd like to continue public outreach, hear from the town and the townspeople about what they see for their park, what they think of our ideas. After doing that, we would like to have a pre-filing meeting with the agencies. That will give them an opportunity to give us feedback on our design before entering that regulatory environment. At that point, we can incorporate both the public and the agency feedback into our design, finalize the design. And the last step of this grant is to actually step into the permitting environment and actually submit permit regulations, permit applications to, yeah, MEPA, Town Conservation Department, DEP, CZM, and the Corps of Engineers. So that kind of wraps it up, and trying to keep this quick and short. Any questions?
Rather depressing at first.
Coastal, yeah, I mean, it's amazing looking at towns, I mean, we do this all over. I will say Dartmouth looks way better than Nantucket, and when you start plotting what these things are in Nantucket, it's a good portion of downtown.
In the ocean.
Okay.
Right.
So, but.
It looks that way.
It is. But you have, you know, those towns which were developed very low, and that's the nice thing about Dartmouth, is that we come up fairly quickly, which does make life a lot easier to adapt, as opposed to communities that are flat, low, and currently in the flood plain.
Also, looking recently at, I was saying, recently looking at the storm surge of the two most recent hurricanes down in Florida, the one most recently seeing just, you know, buildings and homes and hotels and just uninhabitable. It's coming our way. I think we need to wake up and do what we can now.
That's a good point, and, you know, this is a discussion we've had with multiple towns, and the one thing, you know, especially looking at the park here, is you get this back and forth, and especially when we start talking about sea level rise, what it will be, what it won't be. And all of these discussions is, you know, we can look at infrastructure in two different functions. There's critical infrastructure that provides evacuation routes, it's fire departments, it's police stations, you know, hospitals. Those have to be designed to a higher standard, where they're really functional year-round, regardless of what's happening. But when we start talking about town parks, you know, they're very important to the town, they're very important to the public, but they're not critical infrastructure. So we can design them to withstand a lot, but we're not designing for those big massive events. I mean, if we go back to the Hundred Year Storm, we're not going to put a foot walls around this park. If so, we would have this nice wall, but no one would see anything, there'd be no point in being a park anymore. So this is where we can get adaptive and look at, you know, how do we, how do we take a step back, increase the resiliency, so we can keep using this facility into the future, but realizing that, like all these things, it's going to require management, and at times it will get flooded, and that's part of the design, but that also keeps it usable, so.
Ms. McDonald.
Yeah. Okay. Well, at some point in time, 60% of the population of the United States has to realize they live on the coast, on both coasts, so. One of the things that you had asked about, or suggested is public outreach, and I know you're working with Cody, you're working with Sean, have you discussed anything with the parks?
We have an internal team that puts together a system, particularly in coastal sea level, so. Mark Garrett, we've been working with Jerry for the entire process.
All right, well, if you got Tim in there, that, he pretty much speaks for that entire board, so, for the most part. So, you know, he'll keep, I know, he keeps, I just want to make sure, you know, parks and records are involved in this, too, you know. So, yeah, no, I would say that the next step would be probably to hold some kind of a, you know, workshop here, and then invite, you know, the stakeholders to come in, you know, so at least you'll have the technology working hopefully a little bit faster. But you also have room, you know, available, you know, where people can come in, because there's a lot of people that use that park.
No, and that's kind of the goal. I mean, and in a setting like that, it's great to have full-size plans where they're printed out, and people can draw on them, or take post-it notes, and, you know, post their concerns on them. And it makes it adaptable, because they could reach out and, you know, see what they're doing, and so obviously, the setting's a little bit different than, you know, that type of public meeting. But obviously, starting with the select board is important to get your feedback, so you also, when we do go to the public, can you start hearing about what we're up to, or what we're doing? You have a perspective on, you know, the work we've done, and where we're going, and can then, you know, take those concerns and obviously pass them back through the departments that get to us.
Right. And when you start talking about a seawall, you know, I know, we're not talking about the size of the New Bedford dyke, so, not even close. But at least something to, you know, to knock back the erosion a little bit, just to kind of keep it where it's supposed to be. And Tim knows full well that, you know, whenever there's a big storm, or, you know, that, it does get flooded. And it does, and it does damage the infrastructure, where the town has to put in significant sum of money to repair, clean up and repair. You know, it's, we can hedge our bets, we can do what we can, but, you know, everybody talks about a Hundred Year Storm, well, it seems like these Hundred Year Storms are coming every 20 years. So it's not like, you know.
No, and, you know, obviously coastal storms are forecasted to continue to get stronger, more frequent, and, you know, the interesting thing, you know, I'm a big data guy, as opposed to, you know, projections are good, but it's evident, you know, looking at sea level rise and looking at the impacts, you know, especially historic storms have had, you know. When we talk about a foot, you think, oh, that's not that much. When we start going down to the beach, and you look at, you know, the elevation change between, you know, the intertidal zone and, you know, the upper part of the beach, when we start talking a foot or two feet, that's a fairly broad range, and so it drastically, you know, that small change in elevation, you know, drastically pushes in where it goes, and, you know, we could even see that with the images of the flooding earlier, where we went from three feet to four feet. There's one foot, and we drastically changed how much that park is flooded. And so, whether it's the park or other, some other part of the community, yeah, these small changes have big effects. And so, yeah, we're not even talking, you know, big, big storms, or things like, you know, happened in Florida, a simple foot, one foot.
No, I mean, just, you know, come August, everybody around here is whipping out their hurricane tracker app on their phone, so they just kind of keep an eye on what's going on. So, and then this time of the year, it's like, okay, we're pretty good now.
Yeah.
We're out of it for a while, so. Yeah, we got the nor'easters in the winter.
It may not be the Hundred Year Storm, but I've been at a few Wednesday night summer concerts, where towards the end, we're watching the water come up right to the bandstand, and looking at people leaving, you know, through the water, and I know that Tim and Becky are then, you know, really anxious. And so it's not the Hundred Year Storm, it's the Wednesday night concert that we have thousands of people in attendance, and the water's coming in.
Yeah, you have high tide with the southwest breeze, and even, you know, our typical summer southwest breeze, they push water up in the harbor, and so once it goes up.
And it's exactly that seawall area where it's coming through.
And again, you know, we're not talking a storm, this is typical, you know, summer winds. It's blowing 18 miles or something like that, and it pushes water up, and you add a few inches, and all of a sudden, you know, your beach chair, which is sitting in the grass, is all of a sudden getting wet instead of being on the beach, so.
Absolutely.
Again, yeah, these are the small things that, when we talk resiliency, you know.
Any comment, Ms. Gracie?
No, I'm so good. I listen heavily.
Okay. I just would like to add that, you know, what a privilege it is, I think, here we are as a group, trying to improve our town in a way that it requires, and I'm thinking of all the groups involved that have to make this work, conservation, DPW, waterways, parks. It doesn't end. And as a town, we owe it to ourselves and all the people who live here, that we make sure that we work together to get it done, because without it, we're not going to get it done. And I think having you here with this kind of presentation is the way we need to keep things going.
No, and I have to agree, I mean, obviously, hearing the presentation before mine, you know, involvement, and, you know, even touching on, you know, our project in a sense, and obviously Jeremy's from Fosse, and so, you know, the dock extension is, you know, right, goes right back to his office. But it's even interesting, you know, I started talking about this project five years ago, and it took three years to get grant funding for it, so, you know, it is an involved process that takes, you know, all of us, you know, staying on top of it, and to get these done, because if we don't, you know, we can easily see what's going to happen, and that'd be a shame. So yes, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you.
Hopefully, when we reach out.
One more question. So looking at these projects, and certainly you need town input, which you're going to be looking for at these meetings, and, you know, the coordination of the other groups, but as Patty Zworadok told us of all the grants, are there grants available to us for, you know, if we?
The project itself.
Yeah, the project itself, for the dunes, for the seawall.
Sure. So obviously, this is a grant project to start with.
Yeah.
But yes, so CZM does have, through their resiliency program, does have implementation grants, and the one thing, and, you know, Sam can step up and talk about this, but I've had projects that have started from this, you know, design kind of, you know, what are our ideas, through permitting, and they're now being implemented. A great one is Plymouth Long Beach. We looked at how to restore the dunes out on Long Beach. It's went from permitting design, and they just got $2 million to start implementing the project. So there's definitely resources available, and the nice thing with being involved with CZM and also the agencies, where they get involved early, is they take an interest. They like these projects where they can help implement this and, you know, make these happen, and so that actually increases, I wouldn't say, they'll say, it's increases, but it definitely increases your likelihood of getting funding later on. I mean, it's just, so, yeah, there are lots of options going forward. And, yeah, it's just a matter of watching how they come out, and occasionally changing up some of your steps might move forward or backwards a little bit to set you up for that grant cycle.
No pressure, Cody, but.
I think it speaks well for Sean's overall direction, and Cody's, he's showing us now that he's an expert in trying to find the money and the process to get it done, so.
He's done a good job.
Anybody else have any comments anywhere? Okay. We need to vote, or anything to do with this?
Nothing. No, we don't need to vote tonight, it's just to hear the options that have been presented. Thank you.
Great job, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next move to the recreation center, owner's project manager, OPM RFQ.
That's a lot of letters.
I think I said it.
Oh, he's going to give you an update on this.
Okay.
So in your packet is a draft of the RFQ for the owner's project manager of the recreation center. You had previously approved ARPA funding for the design, so Mr. McGinnis and I went through and edited this document, so we'd like your approval to post it. They would be due back, the responses would be due back January 23rd, and then we would look to conduct interviews and evaluate those responses. In the meantime, Mr. McGinnis and I will present to you options for a building committee moving forward, who will help us to identify the OPM for this project.
And one thing to add, what Cody's saying is, you should be aware, we've built two buildings, the police station and the library, but we're required by mass procurement law to hire an owner's project manager from the start, to help with the procurement of the architect and engineer, and work us through the design, and then if the building goes to construction, to oversee that process as well. So this is the beginning of all of that.
I'm sure the review of those submittals will be thoroughly checked.
We have excellent experience, excellent experience.
And rechecked.
Very well, yeah, and you'll notice the evaluation criteria is quite detailed, the documents that we're looking for, the experience that we're looking for, it's a high level, so I anticipate we'll get a very qualified project manager for this project.
We like to come in under budget.
It does ask for references, correct?
It does, yeah.
How we've done in other.
I go back to that police station, and this project, and the interviews we did for the project manager, for the architects, and then for the contractors, and by the way, they all at some point had worked together, and they all had done, I think, what 50 police stations and fire stations between them, the architect, the project managers, so this process got to stay the same way, and it'll work.
Something very special for this town, there's not, there's no question about it. It's something that we need to do.
We got to pay for it.
And not, and not just for the youngsters. It's for everywhere.
Absolutely.
Thinking about your own self here?
Yeah, of course. Seniors.
Have a putting green on it, so.
Oh, well, we could put a putting green in there. Oh, well, we could put a putting green in there.
Okay. Okay. We need to.
You can just vote to approve it.
Make a motion that we approve the submittal as submitted.
Second.
Submitted, yes. Submittal as submitted.
Submittal as submitted.
Okay, we have a second?
You have the second.
Okay. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Frank.
Oh, good.
No, okay.
Thank you.
I think he said no.
Mr. Chairman, I think he wants to say something.
Let's have a question. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Gracie.
Thank you. I'm, I'm wondering where the money's going to come from this project, for this, for this project. Has anybody thought of that and made a list?
I didn't get the question. Frank, you have to talk louder.
Mike, can you turn up the volume, please? Middle shot, Frank.
I'm, I'm wondering where the money's going to come from for this project.
It's, it's, the, the board, this board voted as part of the ARPA funding to use some of the ARPA fund for the design of this project. The construction has not been funded yet, the design needs to be done to estimate an actual cost of the building.
I mean, it's conceivable that when we do all that and then the money may be an issue, but this is the only way to get to that point.
Correct.
It's all a process.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, Frank?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none, passes unanimously.
Very good, thank you.
Let's keep it going.
Thank you all for coming.
Jimmy, why don't you stay?
Jim, thank you.
Jimmy, stay, Jimmy.
Thank you very much.
Jimmy, stay.
Okay, next, Native American Heritage Month, Mr. McGinnis?
Do you want me to? Yes, it was suggested that the board adopts and recognized Native American Heritage Month as it's November of 2022. And there is a proclamation here that I can read and the board can vote on if you would like.
Let's do, let's read it.
I think we should, yeah.
Oh.
Take it away.
Do you want me to take it away? Is there any other?
I can do it if you want.
Mr. Mickelson.
All right. Whereas, okay, Native American Heritage Month, November 2022. Whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by former President George H.W. Bush, designated the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by rich, rich tapestry of American Indians and indigenous people. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity and greatness of America today. And whereas the, excuse me, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout Dartmouth, Massachusetts in the United States. And whereas Native Americans stand among Americans, America's most distinguished authors, artists, scientists, political leaders, and in their accomplishments, they have profoundly strengthened the legacy we will leave our children. And whereas the Select Board affirms its commitment to working towards a society that fosters a deeper understanding and appreciation for the diversity of the culture of history of 573 federally recognized American Indian and Alaskan Native nations in our country. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Dartmouth Select Board does hereby proclaim November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month and encourage all Dartmouth citizens to participate in activities that promote the Native American heritage. Signed by the Dartmouth Select Board.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Comments or questions? I just, I just would like to add, this is, it slides right into the fact that we meet again this week, our Native American History Committee, who are holding on to try to make sure that we, we honor the culture and the history of town and measure it together with our town activities and school activities, et cetera.
Wonderful.
Questions or comments from anybody? Time to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously.
Humanist, humanist.
Okay, next. ABCC is next?
Uh, yes, so the.
ABCC, 2023 season, population increase estimation.
Uh, yes, as part of the liquor license process with the communities, the ABCC requires a population estimation form to be filled out every year and approved by the Select Board. This year, you can see it's in your packet. It's estimated that the population is currently 33,783, and this comes from the town clerk via the last census that was done, so.
That was two years ago, the census? Oh, no, we do our own, there's more accurate than that.
Yes, so, the last census, I think.
We're not going.
Uh, no, it's staying, some, pretty steady.
Pretty steady. Okay. That's point of information only, we can move on from that?
Uh, the board needs to vote and to sign the form and we send it back to the ABCC.
Is this something new?
No, we did it last year, too.
No, we do it annually.
So, they can then set the amount of.
We did?
Yeah. So, they, they use that to set the amount of facilities available to license, right?
And that wasn't changed with the most recent election?
No.
I don't recall this. I really don't.
I do. You remember a lot more of the other stuff than I do. Okay, any comments or questions? Or do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions from now? Okay. Set the vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none, that is.
Done.
Done. Alcohol license renewals.
One item on this, if I may.
Right ahead.
The common victor license, so previously, we were before the board to identify, one member of the board to approve the one-day entertainment licenses, all related. We, we went back, there was a misunderstanding. We thought the common victor licenses were also approved to have the Select Board member identified as the approving authority to approve, I would, not for the alcohol, but just for the general common vic licenses. We went back in the, in the minutes and that wasn't the case, but I would recommend that maybe the board consider having, Select Board Member McDonald is currently tasked with approving those via the.
Sorry?
Please call back.
I, I would recommend having Mr. McDonald as a representative approve the general common vic licenses. We have many of those, I think it's easier in the system to have him go approve. And then we would provide the lists of those, and he would decide if, what can be approved and if any need to go before the board that he felt, just like the one-day entertainment licenses. So, I'm just throwing that out.
So, this.
These are, the ones you're approving tonight are alcohol, they're separate.
Okay.
But for the common vic, this is a good opportunity to kind of visit this and.
How does Mr. McDonald feel about that?
I, I got, I got the first one today and I questioned it because it was like, all of a sudden, I mean, I generally, as soon as I get it in my email and I see it, I get, I take care of it.
Yep.
So.
Well, the whole idea is you're going to have some, you have to bring, bring back to us, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't, I don't have, I don't have, well, I know the one-days was for a reason because that, you know, something comes up and something. So, I mean, if it's just a straight common vic, no alcohol, no entertainment or anything, I don't have a problem doing that. Because that's, it's kind of, it's an easy peasy thing.
If you, you've been doing this now for a little while, how's it been working out?
Fine. I don't think, I don't think anybody has ever had a problem with my response time.
No, the, it sped up the process.
It's too quick.
Excellent.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, let's, I mean, let's put it this way, I mean, if I'm in the middle of something and, you know, I'll eventually get to it, you know, so. But generally, I don't think I've ever gone beyond a full day, you know, on a response.
That's, that's fine. I mean, it can be a day or two at most.
Do we need to vote on that?
I would make a motion and vote on having Sean approve the, the general common vic licenses.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I hear none. Congratulations, Mr. McDonald.
Oh, thank you.
You have been rewarded for doing such an outstanding job.
There's only about 100 you'll have to approve.
More work.
You going to sample all the food that way?
No.
No, okay.
Moving right along.
Well, please, please do. Next would be, we're going to look into now, all subject to Police Chief, Fire Chief and Directive Inspection Services approval. The first section is restaurant, all alcoholic, common victor. Need to read them down?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I guess I can do that. AMC Theaters, Apple New England, Deval's General Store, Farm &amp; Coast, Fiesta Mexican Restaurant, From the Soul, Gumbo's, Joe's Original, 99 Restaurant and Pub, Percy's Place, Max's, Savali, TGI Fridays, The Olive Garden, The Ninth Monarch and The Sail Loft.
Motion to approve.
Let's have one question.
Yes.
Is Apple New England Applebee's?
I can check, but I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I think it is. I believe it is.
We have a motion?
Um, yeah, but I have the, I gave you the motion.
Okay, we have a second.
Yeah, second.
Second, okay. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. The restaurant, all alcoholic, common victor passes unanimously. Restaurant, all alcoholic, common vic, entertainment with alcohol. Cask and Pig, Phase Two and Ying Dynasty.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I hear none, passes unanimously. Restaurant, wine and malt beverages, common vic, Ayah Cherie, Cape Quality Seafood, Friendly Pizza, Jimmy's Pizza and baking.
Motion to approve. Second.
Tough crowd.
Okay, as I said, I read them already, okay, I'm not going to read it again. Any comments or questions? Thank goodness, let's vote on this one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none, passes. Congratulations to those fine establishments. All alcoholic, restaurant, common vic, amusement devices, jukebox, pool table, entertainment with alcohol. That must be big places, a lot going on there. Buffalo Wild Wings and Thirsty at the Cove.
Hold.
Okay, is Thirsty at the Cove, okay, all right.
Is Thirsty Whale.
Make a, that's a Thirsty Whale?
Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve Buffalo Wild Wings only.
And I will second that.
Okay, any questions on that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Motion passes for Buffalo Wild Wings only.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we bring in the owners and the manager of Thirsty at the Cove at our next board meeting to discuss issues that have been brought to our attention via the, the police department reports.
Is there public information in this?
Yes, it is.
Certainly is.
In our packet, so.
It's in the packet.
Okay.
Anybody who wants to see it?
I'll second that.
It's in our packet.
We're voting on that to bring them in.
Yeah, bring them in, yeah.
We're voting to bring them in.
Yes.
Second? Okay, I have a second. Any questions or comments on that motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none. The motion passes unanimously. Restaurant, wine and malt beverages, amusement devices, arcade, Chuck E. Cheese.
I'm sorry, every year, this, this, I'm seconded. I mean, I have to, I have to give it to the parents. Anybody who wants to bring their kids there deserves a drink.
Without a doubt.
Deserve a drink.
More than a drink, they need.
I need a motion, no more editorial comment on that one, I need a motion.
You have, you have.
A motion?
Do I have a motion?
Yes.
I made the motion.
You did? A second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none. Next, club, all alcoholic, common vic, entertainment with alcohol. Allendale Country Club, Country Club of New Bedford and New Bedford Yacht Club.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously. Club, all alcoholic, amusement devices, pool table, jukebox, entertainment with alcohol. Portuguese-American Social Club, UMass Dartmouth, SMU Serve, Inc.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously. Package Goods Store, all alcoholic, Acme Liquors and Dartmouth Market.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously. Package Goods Store, wine and malt beverages, BJ's, Root Six, Beer and Wine, I assume it's not.
Thank you.
Oh, beet and wine.
Beet and wine, that's, it's a vegetarian.
It's not, you know, it's, it's not a produce place.
It's kosher.
Well, I mean, it depends on how beets react when you eat them. I mean, they do serve gas.
Well, it could ferment and make a heck of a wine.
Do you need a motion to correct the spelling? Okay, beer and, beer and wine.
Scribner.
Thank you, Scribner, right.
Motion to approve.
No, you forgot, you forgot to say one.
Oh, that's right.
You forgot to say one.
Oh, Smith Mills Mobile.
Sorry, mobile. Motion to approve.
That's another typo there, right, mobile. Okay.
Second.
Any questions, we got, okay, questions? Let's go, let's keep going here, any? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously with the scripther corrections?
Yes.
Pouring license, running book?
Motion to approve.
Two of them, yes.
Two of them, right, okay.
Second.
Second. Any comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I hear none, passes unanimously.
All right, now, I have a question.
Yes.
To Mr. McGinnis. This appears to be earlier than in the past, so I'm assuming the online permitting process is working.
Yes.
Approximately how many of these alcoholic licenses in general across the border are still remaining out there?
Oh, I don't have that number, I've, not many.
I think it's not that many, I, I see a few that I recall, but-
They've been, I can get you that information.
No, I'm just curious as to, as to how the online permitting-
They've been really good, the, the, the system notifies them multiple times that they, they need to renew, and they've been pretty proactive about coming in, and, you know, it's easy now because they can do it, they don't have to come into Town Hall to do it anymore, so they don't need to sign anything in here, so they just kind of, they fill it out, we go through the whole process, so it's, it's been really good. There's been some that have come in, and we have the kiosk at our, at our counter, and we help them with that, so.
System's working?
Yeah. Look at that.
We've come a long way since-
There's 11 left that haven't. Melanie is right on it.
Thank you, Melanie, you're right there.
Even if it's not even close to 11, it sounds good.
Yeah.
So now, so we, now we know that Melanie watches the meetings.
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. I think you just blew your cover, Melanie.
No, no, Sean blew her cover.
I have to give her credit.
That was impressive all the way around. Started with the, on the, the permit processing, that, that is incredible.
It's done really well, isn't it?
Okay, are we all set here?
On that, yeah.
I also want to thank you for including the police reports, that was very eye-opening. Thank you.
It's, I remember it's from a request from last year.
Yes, it was, yes, it was.
Overall, there's very, very few incidents.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, let's put it this way, I mean, if you read them, you know, yeah, you're gonna have, once in a while, you're gonna have a knucklehead that gets over-served, okay, and they become, you know, it's liquid courage, so, you know, I've dealt with it in, in the past, many times, on several ends.
From which side of the, of the bar? Stool or?
Actually, from, from serving and escorting the person out.
Not in the stool itself?
No.
Poisoned by your own hand?
Escorted many people out to cabs.
Forcibly?
Occasionally, yes. It's happened.
Okay, we are ready to move on?
Yep.
To the town-
Town Administrator update, Mr. McGinnis.
Yes, so, just a few updates, so, as you know, we had the town election recently, I got a, some turnout numbers from the town clerk. We actually had 12,744 voters turnout of the 23,549 registered voters in town, and that equates to-
More than 50%?
51%, so.
So, a question, what about the, the school precinct?
Go ahead.
How many, how many voted?
I think it was like 300 and something, right?
Yes, it was, yeah.
You think three?
Oh, yeah, so, precinct three, I don't have that in front of me, but the clerk said the precinct worked out excellent there. UMass was very accommodating, the students helped out with the whole process, so it was very well received.
I believe Melanie's giving you the data.
Melanie's piping in.
Give me a cheeseburger, we have Melanie, that way you order me.
So, they, they, you know, I, I give Sarah and her staff credit, they do an excellent job with these elections, they're very efficient, well organized, it was very well-run, zero issues, so, you know, I can't, can't say enough.
I was gonna say, it's fascinating, this particular election, young, young kids came out to vote, and here we gave them the opportunity to do it easily, so it worked like, a lot of synergy there.
It was very exciting, I worked on precinct eight, and it was very exciting, we had a number of first-time voters, young folks that came with their parents, and it was very exciting to have them a part of democracy.
So it was great, and just by point of reference, in 2014, there was, the turnout was 39%, so it's really increased.
Yeah, it's great.
So, that's great. The storage tank removal at the old police station site, that project was started, the tank was removed, there is no leaks or anything, but there, when they excavated to remove the tank, they discovered that his, that previously there had been a gas, some sort of fuel leak. So we had an LSP on-site as part of this project, he's on board, working with DEP to draft an immediate response action plan, and they're gonna do some test holes to determine the extent, we're, we're not sure what the extent is, it doesn't seem very large, but they're gonna excavate and do test holes on, starting December 5th, so.
At this point, no danger to the public, is this?
No, no, it's been there. But we're, you know, we're being very proactive about taking care of it.
Lot of rules in, lot of rules.
Yes, yes. Planning and policies, our open space and recreation plan met on November 9th for their last public workshop, so they should be formalizing a draft plan soon. There's a master plan workshop for the public on December 8th at 6:30 PM here in Town Hall to review the draft report, and so that, once that is done, we encourage the public to come and provide comment on that, public and committee members and anybody who's interested, and right now, we're on track to finalize the master plan by the end of January, with the Select Board's approval and the planning board.
Great, great.
Title V, Chris Bishford, our health director, has been vocal about some proposed amendments to Title V that could affect residents in town with septic systems. The Board of Health will be holding two informational meetings for town residents on the draft DEP changes to Title V, the new watershed regulation, permit regulations, as well as the financial implications that, that could have the effect on residents. The first of these is this Wednesday, November 16th at 6:00 PM at the Dartmouth High Auditorium, and we will, the agenda is posted on the website, and also, DEP is also having two webinars on this draft change, one is November 15th and the other is November 16th, and we will post those on our website as well if people are interested.
Zoom?
Yeah, they're webinars, so.
Webinars, it's fancy, they have a Zoom, right?
We continue to work with Gary and Cody and I, working on budget prep for this year, and working with the Finance Committee, we're drafting our budget memo, we should have that just after Thanksgiving for the Select Board to review and to be issued to Town Departments. Procurement, you heard tonight, you voted for the Owners Project Manager, RFP, we've also advertised the assessing revaluation, so that those, those bids aren't in yet, they're not due yet, correct? And then last is the Town Hall Tree Lighting, which will be December 4th, Sunday, from 4:30 to 5:30 here at Town Hall, the annual tree lighting.
So they have raffles, crafts, games, peanuts, popcorn, potato stations, a DJ, refreshments, and more, plus Santa Claus, come on and see these.
You're a Grinch.
I love it, this is, this will be my 15th year.
You're a Grinch, right?
I'm not the Grinch, no, I gave that up.
Tough crowd.
Okay.
That is it, then, under, our old business, no new updates on any of the items.
Okay. We have minutes to approve, the meeting of October 17.
So, second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, the minutes are approved for October 17. Comments, updates from our Select Board members? Mr. McDonald?
We've got, I, I don't remember the date, maybe Cody, you can help, we got a stakeholders' meeting on Route 6 coming up?
It's, I'll tell you right now, it's in my calendar, it is-
What was the comment, I'm sorry?
The stakeholders' meeting on Route 6 and the redesign, or whatever they've, you know.
It's this Thursday at 2:00 PM.
This Thursday, okay, all right, yeah, that's right, I had two meetings.
This Thursday?
The Thursday, the 17th at 2:00 PM.
It's, it's, it's a-
It's via Zoom.
There's a web link, so. All right, so it's interesting to see what's gonna happen with that. The other thing is, did Dartmouth Fire District 3 get back with you with a report as to that fire?
No, the chief was out of town, he was getting back and gonna provide data on, we, we asked for any issues in that area, that, our reports, so I'll check in with him tomorrow.
Okay. So, I think that was, that's all I have, I think, right now, just to-
Mr. Mickelson? I, I just had a comment on the, on the Fire District 1. I was aware, I had every intention of attending the meeting there, because they voted to do that expansion, and I think it's a critical time now that they should be, if they're gonna look at expansion, what's gonna happen to that, that piece of land across the street? And I think I would like to see us try to reach out to them sooner than later to try to get them on the agenda, and have a public meeting in regard to that. Anybody object to that?
No. Get them in here, sure.
Sooner than later?
Yep, sooner the better.
It's a formal public meeting regarding the, the disposition of the, of the old fire department, building and land. Okay? Mr. Gracie? Comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Brooks, you all set?
Uh, let me see, I just want us-
Want you to say something.
I just wanted us to, I, I just made, have a running list, and I want to make sure that we revisit the donation, donation bid bylaw, just putting it out there, we took it off the agenda.
Well, that, that's not gonna happen until the town meeting, the next one.
Right, but before it goes, we want to look at it and, and clean it up, we had some concerns about it.
That would be part of the process for the upcoming-
Right, so let's not wait too long.
All right.
Before we discuss that.